I'd like to reconvene our public meeting of November sixteenth for our board, regular board business meeting and ask for a pledge, student to lead our pledge, please.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a report out of closed session this evening. I'd like a motion, please, to adopt our agenda. A student vote?
In favor.
Thank you, all board members all in favor. I opposed carries four oh one. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have public comment cards received?
Yes, I have one on a non-agenda item. I'd like to call Rudy Kraus to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, outside. Ms. Weber, that is the only non-agenda comment card that we have.
Wait a minute, see if he's.
We have a one speaker card, but the speaker is not in the room. So we'll just give him a minute to let him know his time is come, to come to the podium. So we have one speaker on a non-agenda item, Mr. Rudy Kraus, please come to the podium and you'll have three minutes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, I'll just tell you. Okay. Okay, hopefully. Okay, my name is Rudy Kraus. Last time I was here, I was talking about COVID science. And I was right about everything. I wrote the anaerobic science of COVID from when I saw you last. And today I solved myocarditis at the nano level. It's an anaerobic virus. It lives without oxygen. I run Cali CSI, crime scene investigation. Everything's a crime. I've been running this since nineteen ninety. And I work on the crimes of the mind. These are the biggest crimes ever committed in the history of the world. And we see the deconstruction of the United States right now from within, the deconstruction from within. There's nine, there's eight systems of government. The US education system is enabling the deconstruction of the United States. You're implementing the Klaus Schwab agenda. The Great Reset, which is the depopulation agenda. Now, what I want to talk about today is nanotechnology that's in the vaccinated. Ninety-five percent of the vaccine is nanotechnology graphene oxide. Go, G O, I call it gox, I think it sounds better. Graphene oxide is a thousand times more electrically conductive than silicon, in silicone chips. Everyone who's vaccinated is part of the internet body of things now. The nanotechnology is up in their brain. And that's why we, I'm here to talk about twenty twenty-four, the election. I've heard Harari talk about this at the World Economic Forum, that humans are hackable animals. They're no different now than a banana. And this is what's going to happen in twenty-four. Everyone thinks that Trump is going to win, maybe. But the Democrats, they're not worried about it. Why not? Because that's when they're going to use the five G technology. They did a five G upgrade on October tenth. That's to bring all of the vaccinated in line. They'll be keep, they'll continue to be doing the upgrades on them so that they'll all be in sync for the twenty twenty-four election. When the voter goes into the voting booth, even if they're going to vote for Trump, they'll brain fog. It'll, it'll be on their Bluetooth, on their phone app. They will brain fog. Then they think they're going to vote Trump. They'll get a Biden signal. They'll vote for Biden. Then the brain fog, they'll walk out, the brain fog will clear. They'll get an endorphin rush as a plus. And they'll think they voted Trump, but they voted Biden. And that's how they're going to steal the election in twenty twenty-four. I'm the first in the world to say it.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Ms. Weber, I have no other comment cards?
Thank you. We move to our section on reports and we begin with our student, student board member.
Yes, good evening. Before I start a reformal reports on all the different schools, I thought I'd share a cool experience that I've had in regards to education over the past couple of weeks. So as part of my application to the California State Board of Education as a student board member, I went up to Sacramento last week to meet with our state board of education president, along with the governor and some other Tony, superintendent Tommy, Tony as well. And I had the opportunity, I thought I'd share to learn a little bit about education and policy and stuff like that. Also, a lot about different students' experiences. Part of the application was attending an education conference. And it really like allowed me to have a perspective on what students across California, not just in Laguna Beach, are having with education, what issues their districts are facing. Specifically, I learned a lot about what rural areas are facing, which is drastically different than what Laguna Beach faces. And I had a really interesting time and I thought I'd share about that. I learned a lot from, you know, going up there. Unfortunately, I did not make it to be the state student, student board member. But I made it to the top three, so I just thought I'd share that. And then, thank you. And then I'll guess I'll start with our schools report to start with Laguna Beach High School. Our tennis won D two CIF, which is a huge accomplishment on their part. Congratulations to the girls tennis. Yes, it's been a while. Boys water polo came up a little bit short on Saturday at Mount SAC in Division One, facing Huntington Beach, losing ten-nine in double overtime. I was there, it was rough, but we're bouncing back. Cross country is still competing in their CIF right now. And then flow also just happened last week, some major flow activities. For those of you who are not familiar with that, it's essentially our environment program at the high school that's run by Mr. Shen that puts an emphasis on students understanding the environment around them and how their actions have a direct effect. So we've had some really cool speakers come in, people from Surf Rider, local film, local filmmakers, and students had the opportunity to hear from them last week. To move on to Thurston now, they just, they've had a lot of school spirit activities. They just had their Halloween dance, which my sister went to, which was a success, I heard. It's really fun. They've also started their anti-bollying campaign. That's really important as we know, we see bowling is on the rise and you know, the effects of bowling can be really devastating on a lot of students. So I think that's an awesome thing. And then they've also had their red ribbon kind of week, which is their drug reduction and kind of like showing that drugs are not the way out. There's other ways and stuff like that. And then in regards to El Moro, more school spirit, they had their blue blood last, which was a total success, I heard from Dr. Hatchell. And then they've also had art masters. And again, I want to comment on the importance of this is that school is not just about learning English and social science. It's also about learning about other types of things as well, such as art. And I think that's really important that we're giving students the opportunity to learn about that. Because one of the issues at the state board that I heard from a lot of students, as well as the vice president and the board president is that there isn't enough arts education in California. A lot of students are lacking that in their district, funding for music programs, stuff like that. So I really appreciate us having that. And then the other thing is that they started having Heritage Day specifically in regards to indigenous peoples and their culture. And I think that's really important because often we kind of, we kind of, and especially in our west, in western kind of history, we kind of sometimes overlook that sometimes. Something that's really important that we're highlighting that and learning about that. And then at Top of the World, Dr., Ms. Schooler shared with me that they're doing chalk drawings during lunch, which I think is an awesome way for students who don't necessarily want to kick a football around the field or, you know, play soccer or stuff like that, to give them something else during lunch, because that's just, just a nice alternative. They're also hosting a food drive, which I think is amazing. I was, when I was at Top of the World and Student Council, I was part of that as well. And I think that's awesome, they're continuing that. And then they had Greg along as a guest speaker, kind of just talking to them about his experience in life. And then I thought I'd mention too, all these reports are from the students. So I reached out, student leaders provided these reports, which I think is really cool. Because obviously the principals have a good understanding what's going on at the school, but this, you know, my jobs represent the students and, you know, hearing from students is what we want. That's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Move to our bargaining units and we'll start with LaBufo with Mr. Whitkop.
All right, thanks for letting me be here today. I'm going to be really short with it. We just finished our eighth day of negotiations. It went very well. And our site reps and our negotiators are now pushing out all the information to all the sites and we're voting to ratify this week, so hopefully we'll have it to the, the board at the next meeting. And everything is going well.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Susiac for CSEA.
Good evening. I just want to start by saying, we've been talking a lot about gratitude within CSEA and just at the schools. And we feel very fortunate for the district we work in and the the options and the students that we work with and the people we work with. I really truly feel we work with an amazing team. We just had our election yesterday and I was voted in again as president for two more years. Bundy Kinder was re-elected as my recording secretary from El Moro. And we have, I have a new executive board person, Stacy Johnson from Thurston, who will now be our new communications officer and doing our newsletter for us. So I'm really excited about that, that we have someone from every site now involved and part of the executive board. I attended the CBA conference with Mr. Conlon last week. That was really a treat. Again, they had some amazing speakers and breakout sessions and I did most, all my breakout sessions that I chose were on education, on happiness, gratitude, drug awareness, learned a lot there. That a highlighter might not look like a highlighter. And, and about our homeless population too, and how we can serve them better. So it really gave me a lot to think about and I appreciate being able to attend that. And I hope everyone has a wonderful week off next week and Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you. We have, we're not having a report from our SO this evening. We move to superintendent Dr. Valoria.
Good evening. So it's been busy. I'll just do a couple of highlights. One, we had our superintendent PTA coffee, which is with the PTA presidents. I had tended the school power executive meeting and did a short kind of update, similar to I did to the board, right? Opening of schools, just kind of provide them an overview of all the things that are going on to build off of our student board reps. Congrats to all the sports programs in CIF. It's, it's a lot for our kids. I mean, the, the season just continues to go on and on. But they're just amazing, what they've accomplished this year. And I heard a lot about the boys water polo match and it was definitely nail biter. So, but again, congrats to everybody and congrats to the cross-country team still, still going. I did attend the building effective arts programs at Bowers Museum that was hosted by pretty much every county office of Ed seemed to be there. LA County, obviously, Orange County, San Diego County, the California County Superintendent's was sponsored at the Arts Education Collective as well. I was a little sad because it was so, I felt like, to your point around art, you know, we have an amazing program and continue to look for ways to expand ours. The attendance was just really low. And so it was really disheartening to see that. We had, there were three of us there from the district, just to kind of hear about, you know, some of the different ideas that are out there. But what it made me realize, and I think as a student board rep, often state, it's just how far ahead we are in so many ways in other places. And so did I get a couple of takeaways? I always find something. But, you know, Sarah Woolsey and myself were there and we were just chatting about, you know, what an amazing thing we have and how lucky we are. So thank you for your commitment to art in our, in our district. And last but not least, thanks to staff for putting on Lynn Lyons. I think she just had a great message for our families and for our staff. And so again, thank you to the instructional services team. I know it's a lot of work and color just to get everybody wrangled. And, and she did several sessions with staff. We had great, great turnout, great conversation with families. So for those that couldn't attend, I, I'm bummed because she had such an amazing message. So, but until next time, because I'm sure we'll have another speaker in the future. Well, that's it for me for now.
Thank you. Go to our cabinet and we begin with Mr. Dixon, please.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Today, we had a team from our safety committee that included Ms. Weber, Brian Carlson, the assistant principal at the high school, Anna Karen Urano back there, and Ryan Zada and myself. It was through the emergency preparedness inter-agency collaborative epic. And you've seen that's our partnership with a lot of our local districts like Irvine Unified, Saddleback Valley Unified was there, lots of the local police, fire, and even county healthcare agencies. And today we did a long drill practicing, speaking of athletics, the response to acts of violence during an after-school or athletic event that has large audiences. And we were able to simulate through one of Orange Unified School District's high schools, what would be an example during a large football game and how to respond. So a very valuable tabletop altogether. We will provide a lot of information in the weekly that shows the outline of what we covered. But again, it just kind of goes back to, there's always more to think about and really appreciate that we've committed this district to improving our safety and knowing that we have to continue to stay a part of these things. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Conlon.
Thank you, President Fickers. So as Scott mentioned, we are definitely excited and pleased to wrap negotiations with LaBufo and appreciate the collaborative relationship that we have at the table. So tentative agreement will be getting finalized, getting voted on by LaBufo members this week. And we'll have it on the December fourteenth board agenda for ratification. And then I was able to join Dr. Hatchell today at El Moro for a nice sidewalk. And we was to catch day one of Heritage Days. So it was amazing and the amount of work and just time from school staff as well as PTA staff to be able to put that on is very impressive. So kudos to, to El Moro. And then we're also excited to finalize the recruitment of our supervisor nutrition services. It's on the personal report for this evening. And also our TK extended day program para educator position being finalized tomorrow with the final round interviews for that as well. And so just as a note, we're planning, as of now, there's interest at El Moro based on student, parent interest. And more than likely, what plan will be to roll out the program at top of the world in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Based on, again, we had enough interest at El Moro to run the program. So, but again, looking for, continuing to enhance and grow our, our programs for students.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. We were at the Heritage Days as well, which was wonderful. I did, to get ready for Black Friday, I went to the Thurston Sports Swap. And always a fun event when it, doors open up and every, all the kids go sprinting in to look at skateboards and surfboards. So it was always a fun event to be at if you haven't been there. But do I just say we had a, you know, I think as you made were there, the Lynn Lyons event, just a wonderful parent event to talk about student anxiety and mental health wellness, keeping that at the front of the work that we do and how important that is. Not just for, obviously, our students, but for our families and our staff. Also recently, we brought in a national expert on literacy to work with our staff, looking around the research, learning how to read and those targeted interventions. And that continues to be a priority. So that was a great experience. And then lastly, I did want to give a shout out to Scott here, who was recently interviewed for the twenty twenty-three International Print Day Conference, which had people from all around the world, this online conference around career skills, sharing experiences with our kids, our, his entrepreneurship program. And then he's actually had people reach out to him from countries outside of the US. So a big shout out to Scott, it was really cool.
Thank you. Good to know, Scott. Thank you very much. We now have information items and business services. Our first item will be a report on developers fees. Do we have any public comment on that item?
None received.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. This is our annual report that we bring to the board related to Fund twenty-five, our developer fee fund. You see in this report, it shows what we currently collect or what we have collected, what we've allocated the funding for, and then what's remaining. And I would just like to point out to the board that the bulk of the funding that we will need for supporting transitional kindergarten, as that's a new program in our district, is where we've assigned these dollars from Fund twenty-five. And you'll see that in the report. Unfortunately, we're estimating to receive much less than the project or the conversions cost for transitional kindergarten. So one thing that maybe the board could consider in the future is doing another needs assessment based on the addition of the two new programs that we've had this year and looking at how that correlates to the developer fee rate that we have. As a reminder, that hasn't been updated since two thousand and one. So it's a future discussion, but for that, for now, this is an inner report, information only for the board to see where the developer fees are coming in and going.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Dixon on this?
Mr. Dixon, do you have a sense of what that report and analysis would, would cost, what the fiscal impact might be, like a rough order magnitude when it could possibly come back?
The report itself is not that expensive. I remember last time we did it, it was anywhere between around five to ten thousand dollars, if I recall. It's really looking at your new development in the city. And with us, there's not a lot of new development. And then the programs or expansion of programs, which is what we're currently doing with transitional kindergarten and the preschool program. And then there are very specific expenditures that you are only allowed to do with Fund twenty-five. So you want to make sure that those fall within the justification as well. So it is a comprehensive report, but it is standardized throughout the state. So it doesn't take a lot of time for the consultants to come on and do it for us.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for keeping us updated on this. It's an important part of our budget. Our next item is seven B, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four facilities master plan update. Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, I have one comment card received on seven B, Gary Kasek.
Good evening, happy Thanksgiving. Because we have to do these comments before the presentation, it's a little tricky. So most of my things are going to be questions that I hope Mr. Dixon addresses when he does his presentation. So in the enrollment projections, I noticed on kindergarten twenty twenty-four, there's a number twelve in the slot. I don't know if that's a typo or some anomaly, but I'm really interested in how you're doing your projections, particularly for TK, which there's no history for. So how are you projecting those numbers? And it, you know, if I were to, from my business standpoint, it kind of looks like a magic happens. Thank you. Kind of like, we good? Kind of looks like a magic happens here at, at the point that we go into twenty-four. So how are you doing those projections? And, you know, given that one anomaly, are the other counts all correct? Also, as we get into the aquatics, if you could provide some clarity on the source of funding. So I can read the deck or read the materials. It looks like funding sources may be changing. So if you would, as much clarity as you could provide for us with the materials that we have. Is it part of an FMP or is it being proposed outside of the FMP? Additionally, how did the general fund balance get so large? If it's thirteen million dollars now, and ideally, it sounds like it was projected that it should be a two and a half to three million. You know, what's been happening in the last several years to allow it to get so, so excessive? And then specifically on the aquatics, I guess more of a commentary than questions. What was your logic on the timing? I mean, given the discussions with the city are very open, meetings are still pending, the city is still waiting for sort of a formal suggestion from the school board on how to move forward with the joint use agreement. What assumptions did you make on operating costs going forward? Would the city participate? Wouldn't they? Didn't see anything in the notes regarding that. And since it's such, since they're seventy percent of the user of the pool, I would think that would, should be noted somewhere in the analysis. I'm just anxious to hear what you have about that. I also noticed there, there wasn't anything that I could see in the deck regarding if, what your SEQA assumptions were, whether they, whether you think it qualifies for an exemption? If you think that it will impact the timing or you'll think that impact the cost? Be anxious to know if your next steps from the last meeting to this meeting considered any of the SEQA activities. And that's really it. Other than we saw that on the closed agenda, you were naming your negotiators for the city discussion with real property. We assumed that that's all that was, since there was no report out, was just naming the negotiators and not in fact discussing any activities regarding what those negotiations would entail. So look forward to hearing the presentation. I'm sure Mr. Dixon will hit a lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this that did not submit a card? Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. So I'm going to have Ryan Zada come up to the podium and we're going to kind of tag team this presentation together tonight. As you know, tonight, we're bringing an information item only as the draft master plan. It's a culmination of our last over years worth of work, bringing updates and reviewing feedback into what we've been more traditionally seeing every year is in this format. So we wanted to make sure it was consistent with, with what you've seen in the past. Ryan will provide kind of a high-level overview of the project scoping. And then I'm going to provide some funding information that isn't necessarily in the master plan itself, but has been part of our presentation and process up to this point. And I just want to make sure we keep it out in front. So if there's any questions or interest by the board, we can continue in that dialogue. And then I do think we'll be able to answer a lot, if not all of the questions that we've heard tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over, Mr. Zada.
Thank you. Included within the facility master plan is a timeline of identified projects, cost estimates and current funding cash flow. As a reminder, the facility master plan is updated annually, which gives opportunity to address changes and undefined needs that arise. The original scope and cost of the estimates brought at the start of the facility master plan process back in March of twenty twenty-three have been updated significantly to show what is here tonight. The facility master plan sets the vision for district-wide facilities. It establishes available resources and determines the priorities to secure funds to complete the vision. Each new project will be constructed to meet the highest green building standards possible in an effort to meet our sustainability goals. Just as a reminder, the projects that we have been discussing over the past year or so, they're going to be shown here in the next two slides. They provide an overview of what we've included in the update. Here you see major projects that are identified at Laguna Beach High School and Thurston Middle School. And on this slide, you'll see the remaining projects listed for both elementary schools and the district offices. Project schedule. Please note the CIP cash flow report on the last page of the facility master plan document that identifies the TK and pool projects to start planning and design first. The TK is eligible for potential state funding, whereas the pool is not. But there is a potential for the city to fund a portion of the project. Who will start a construction will be contingent on the funding available and will depend on the current negotiations with the city as we look to update our joint use agreements. There's also added benefit for delaying many of the classroom-related projects as they will be eligible for state matching funds through the state building program at later years. And we can seek financing to bridge the gap in available resources to actual project costs. Jeff will discuss more about the financing piece later in this presentation. I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to Jeff, the next slide.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Before I get into the project funding model, just, just to quickly address, our enrollment projections are done from a professional consultant decision insight who is now purchased through Power School. So it's not something that we've done in-house. It's something that's actually a company does for us. And then the typo on the enrollment projections is a typo. And thank you, Member Osborne, for catching that from us earlier. That is a typo and that will be corrected and we'll double run through the entire report again before bringing it back in December for action. So. Yeah, we're missing a number at the end. Yeah. Yeah, we're not projecting, projecting something horrible to happen that year with our, with our poor littles. So when you look at the facilities master plan as it's presented to you, you'll note that there's certain revenue assumptions that are included that we haven't necessarily talked about, but our budget impacts. The first would be a transfer of potentially, our potential one-time dollars of ten million out of our general fund to the capital improvement program fund, Fund forty. Another assumption that will require future board approval tonight is the use of the arts music discretionary block grant to support the theater upgrades that we've been talking about in the master plan update. We feel that the use of those one-times funds with that project are very applicable and appropriate and, but that does require additional action from the board. And then you'll please note that the continuation, we did not make any adjustments to our current capital improvement program or facility repair replacement program funding remaining at the two-point-one million dollars total per year. So here's a general overview on this slide of potential funding outside of district funds. Please note, none of this has been included in the cash flow assumptions as we think it's too early. For example, the state matching fund. For example, the state matching funds that you see up there beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six, there's a good amount of funding we could be eligible for. As a reminder, the current state facilities program, the funding eligibility is based on classroom spaces and it's modernization and new construction only. So such things as athletic fields, pools, gymnasiums have not been eligible for funding up to this point. That could change with the new state facility, facility bond, but that is not the case today. So even with that, you can see based on the projects we've identified, there's quite a bit of funding that we'd be eligible for. The reason we wouldn't include it in this master plan is because it's, it is a ten-year plan. And I'm going to say only ten years because when you're getting reimbursements for the state on these large projects that take many years to develop and build, oftentimes that matching funds from the state comes many years after the fact. So it may not even be within our current ten years and it's something that we'd want to address with an annual update. And then you'll notice though, in the local, the only funding source identified in that local funding source right now would be based on the discussions we've looked at in the past on extending the current general obligation bond, and that was the estimate provided by our financial advisor, Field Manual Lab and Associates. And that's just identified as local. Excellent. As a reminder of some of the information that we have seen related to financing, because you note that there's a lot of projects, at least within ten years, that we can't afford on our own or with our own funding today and could require financing. So some of the options we've talked about, including the use of a certificate of participation was essentially a loan taken against our general fund or a general obligation bond, whether it be a new bond or an extension of the existing, and those are the dollar figures that we've reviewed in the past. So the extension of the current bond, which would allow access to those funds in about twenty twenty-nine, free up about eighty million dollars. Whereas a certificate of participation, working under the assumption of our current CIP and FERP funding model of roughly two point one million dollars a year, you can see that gets access to about thirty-five million dollars a year. Whereas if you were to do a hundred million dollar certificate of participation, you're getting a paying about closer to six million dollars of debt service per year on that loan. When we talk about those financing options, specific to the bond extension or a new bond, wherever that would be. The timing of getting those funds, as I mentioned, would not be till the later years. So if the bond would be successfully extended in, in the twenty-six election or twenty-eight election, we wouldn't have access to those funds until January of twenty twenty-nine. Next slide. And then as we look and, and we progress through the master plan, at any point when we want to look at what is the possibility of potentially the viability of a bond or a bond extension, the process is laid out here and we talked about this with a field manual up and associates. The first step at this point would be to bring on a surveying and communications consultant. So you can start building your team to identify the interest or the capacity that the voters would have to support such bonds. And outside of that, we're happy to take any questions related to the draft plan presented to you tonight.
Questions? If I, I'm, I'm looking at, is it okay to look at the schedule now or do you not want me to do that? The schedule, like what's happening in twenty thirty, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Absolutely.
That's okay. Okay. In, in looking at that, it seems like we should prioritize first what we think is most important. And I know we talked about, we need to do the UTK buildings because we're kind of out of compliance. And some other things, are, are we looking at if, if we don't pass a bond? And if the city doesn't agree to share pool costs, is this plan still viable?
Good question, but that is also why we update it annually, because the information changes as we know, especially with regards to funding sources. Now, I will say the way we structured this is that we are addressing the transitional kindergarten and preschool right away with interim housing and you'll see funding allocated for that. But the phasing and construction of those projects is really best done once. So you're moving kids less. And that's why they're structured to be where they are, so that you're only using interim housing once versus having to move the kids two, three, four times as you build out the campus. Yeah, good question.
And I guess I, I also wondered about how I know we gave input and some of it just makes sense building wise, but how it was determined what projects were first. For, for instance, I thought previously we had talked about expanding the gym at Thurston. And that, that would be really helpful for the students. And now, and that's scheduled in twenty-eight, thirty, and why that isn't scheduled in twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, that certainly could move. It is all contingent right now based on our very conservative funding assumptions. So as you know, we don't assume any state matching dollars. We don't assume any dollars from the city of Laguna Beach. We don't assume any dollars for the inflation reduction act that we're going to work through on our sustainability. So as of today, we don't want to make any real assumptions that pigeonholes or get our hopes up on projects like that until we can realistically afford it. But as I said, that could change next year, it could change the following year and every year, that's why we bring this update to the board.
I, I also wondered, I knew, and we're going to talk about it later, the funds that may be used to improve the theaters. And, but this is, that, those are also on this. Theater improvements are also on part of this, but if we, if we put that money there now, can that be done sooner?
So we, we have those funds. It is in our fund balance. So you know, when you look on the components of ending fund balance, if the board were to take action and approve those funds from the arts music discretionary block grant tonight, that makes it much easier to commit to moving forward on that project because now we have the funding source in hand. Yeah.
Okay. And then that could come off, off of here.
We definitely want to keep it up in our master plan until the project's done. But yeah, it's, it's a, that's an important one. There's a lot of discussion around that theater and it does need, it's got some great opportunities, especially to improve the operational efficiencies and the energy use for sure.
And then I, I was also curious in looking as our, as we had a question about how our, our enrollment projections, just what hit me was that TK for twenty twenty-three was thirty-five. Why do we think it's going to go to eighty for twenty twenty-six? And I understand you didn't do that. But I'm trying to make sense why we think it's going to more than dub.
So that's a good reminder of why we include demographics in our facilities master plan is we want to plan for worst case scenario. So you've got to be ready for, to support the most amount of kids for any given program, facilities wise. Because as you know, it takes us several years to get projects, especially significant projects from start to finish. So we want to be ready with that. Whereas if you look at our budget books, that's going to assume less students because it's conservative in nature, assuming you get small dollars attached to those kids from the state. So that's why there's conservative and a moderate.
Isn't it also aligned with the state mandates when it becomes available to all four-year-olds?
Yeah, based on, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions on this update on, on the plan?
Mr. Dixon, on the project funding models on slide six. So we are contemplating on a bullet point two, a ten million dollar contribution from the one time of ten million. I know item three is already on our agenda for tonight for action, but would we bring? Do you need consensus to bring that back for action, that ten million dollar contribution? I support that.
No, thank you. That's a good, so what we would do is we would bring that and show it at first interim as a potential transfer that would occur at first interim and then would come back to you after that. So now we approve part of the budget and bring you a resolution probably in January or February where the transfer would actually have to.
After first, first interim. Okay. And then we've already done item one on the Fund forty or is that the next year's?
That is the existing program that we've had since two thousand and fifteen is, is those exact amounts. One point two million to the capital improvement program and nine hundred thousand to the facility repair replacement program.
Thank you. And then addressing, well, that's actually discussion. So I'll wait, Member Vickers, because I wanted to comment on Member Perry's comment. It's not right. It's all, okay. Oh, good. Thank you, Dr. Valera. So basically you have short-term projects of, starting in twenty twenty-four of TK classroom modernizations. We have possible dollars that we could access. We have a, a new program we need to add student facing program. We have the aquatic facility on there and then the rest of the projects seem to fall after a potential new source of funding, either COP or bond extension. So we need to wait to access those funds until January of twenty twenty-nine. So it doesn't seem like there's actually much in the midterm except for design and planning. Is that a better way to think about it? Remember Perry's kind of saying all those are pushed out. We have kind of what we can do right now with our available funding. And then we have to decide on whether we're going to move forward with a bond study and a potential bond issuance to raise funds for the rest.
Correct. And if you recall, on the funding eligibility slide from the state of California, the first time we have access to that large pot of eligible funds is twenty-five, twenty-six anyway. So there's, there's a, we're in a good spot or actually the timing's pretty good right now.
And then one other question on the, any of the IRA accessible funds, when will we have a report back from those consultants on more specifics on those available funds on the Inflation Reduction Act?
Yeah, we, we had a project, yes. I Bailey, our auditing firm who's providing the services to identify all of the funding sources. Now, it's going to coincide with the timing of the current request for proposals that Mr. Zeta has out for those energy design related services. That's going to identify all the projects within the district. And then what I Bailey's going to do is come alongside with us and they're going to align those projects with all the available federal rebates that are, that are out there. And that way we get a realistic estimate of what funding we would have access to, to support our projects. And then we'll eventually, we'll bring that back to the board. This, so I don't know that until we get that consultant on board with the RFP and we get their kind of schedule put out, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know when, but we're, it's, everything's in process right now.
Any other questions or comments? Appreciate the update for both Ryan and Jeff and we'll keep you, try to give you the best input we can. I think like was identified, we did give the priorities before. I think this just reminds us how long it's going to take, you know, to get to the projects, but also that keeps in mind that the funding for the projects that we don't, you know, we wouldn't have it all at once. So it's important to push as you, the term you used, I think Kelly was to push things back because it's, they are pushed back. Thank you. Move to action items under section eight, human resources. Our first item is approval of service agreement with collective consultancy for interest-based bargaining facilitation with Laguna Beach Unified School District from January first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, not to exceed twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. Do we have public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. And Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Vickers. So as you know, you approved a consulting agreement with Barbara and Gonzalez back at the September twenty-first board meeting for IBB facilitation during negotiations at the LaBuca table. We've been using several different facilitators through Barbara and Gonzalez over the last few years. Emily Gonzalez is actually, she's with collective consultancy, but she was actually a subcontractor with Barbara and Gonzalez and we utilized her in the spring. And both, both teams really enjoyed how she, how she facilitated the table and it made, we had good success with her facilitating. She has since split from Barbara and Gonzalez. And so this service agreement allows us to utilize her for IBB refresher training in January as well as act as a facilitator for the LaBuca negotiation this coming spring. And we still plan to honor our previous agreement with Barbara and Gonzalez, but just for the CSA table this spring. The cost between both agreements will be well less than eighty-five thousand dollars. That was not to exceed on the, on the Barbara and Gonzalez that was previously approved in, in September. So again, it's just a shift for one table, but will be well below what was projected previously.
Are there any questions on this item?
Just about how many days does Barbara Gonzalez work for the eighty-five thousand dollars?
Well, again, the, it's, his cost, I believe, was twenty-eight hundred dollars a session. So again, it was a high not to exceed, just with an open, you know, knowing both tables. But again, it'll be well, well below that. We're anticipating probably like five or six sessions with, with CSA. So you're looking at maybe fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, it asks for motion, please. Any discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members on favor. I pose, carries four oh one. Thank you. Section nine, action items and instruction. Item A, approval of the art, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant plan for the Laguna Beach Unified School District for one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring forward this plan to the board to review for approval. This is a part of the arts, music, instructional materials block discretionary block grant, better known as AMN grant plan. That was approved by the state back actually almost about a year ago. As we're heading towards the election and then it's been adjusted multiple times since then to finally be finalized this summer. So these are one-time funds. While arts and music are in the title of the grant, ultimately it can be spent on almost anything related to instruction. There's five components that they have allowable expenses. And you can see in the plan, the standards aligned instructional materials in all subject areas, visual performing arts, world languages, math, science, English, all of our subject areas. Ethnic studies, media literacy, computer science. There's also allowable expenses in the area of professional development for school climate. Developing, they specifically call diverse culturally relevant and multilingual school library book collections, operational costs and COVID nineteen related costs. So we, last spring, we did a lot of outreach around this, as well as the other, the Prop twenty-eight, which this, which is not a part of this. The ongoing funds, the Prop twenty-eight, so we, the principals talked to parents, PTA, school set councils, we met with school leadership teams, staff, multiple staff members and staff teams as well. The, the board item shows a list of the different themes that they were interested in that included performing, improving our performing arts theater facilities at the middle of high school, sound, visual lighting equipment, after school or tutorial period classes, new instruments, field trips, professional, professional experts for visual performing arts, storage space, fresh development. Some more multilingual, diverse book, library book collections, environmentally friendly equipment and then some supplies, continued support, social, emotional wellness for students and staff. So we took that in. Now the Prop twenty-eight funds, which again, that's not what this is. Eighty percent of that has to be spent on staffing. So the focus on that, setting aside the interest around different staffing needs. These are one-time funds and as Mr. Dixon mentioned earlier, the best use of one-time fund is something unique that might come up that you couldn't do otherwise or would be challenging to do otherwise. So in this case, we, some of the things around field trips and professional development, we have budgets for that already. So we were looking at other costs that maybe are unique to it. So in the plan, we've landed on a couple of different areas. The, the primary area is around the facilities, performing arts facilities, which stays true to the original purpose of the grant, although it does have that full flexibility for any area. So you'll notice districts are using this for a whole variety of reasons. But we want to try to stay focused to the original tent. So the vast majority of the funds are, will be spent, would be spent towards the high school theater and the middle school theater and a couple of things at the elementaries as well, and their multipurpose rooms. Different things around lighting, sound, different equipment that they would need where we have different classes or programs that are in there on a regular basis. A wide variety that are in there on a regular basis for our students' classes. And so definitely that equipment would make a very big difference. So we reckon that that's typically a very good use for one-time funds. There is a set of funds in there around some additional structural professional development practices around school climate. That connects to a lot of the work that we're, allows us to continue to do some areas around restorative practices that we've been prioritizing for the last couple of years. Anti-bias, digital media literacy, some different areas that we've continued to focus on. So that allows us to continue that for a few more years. Adding to our school libraries, so there's a set of funds in there around expanding school libraries, multilingual books for students, things that, that kids find interesting and curious. And then a handful of dollars for operational, different things around more efficient equipment, especially in the area of sustainable equipment or environmentally friendly things that we are working on already. So this gives us additional dollars in that area, would help around resource management or infrastructure. And then a few dollars that are available for student and staff wellness. So, but you already have a budget for that. So that's the smallest category that those ones are in. So bringing this plan forward for your review and approval for this arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
The funds need to be encumbered, and then we can use them through 26.
Yeah, there's a very short window to spend it, right? So that's also is a big factor.
And I imagine Jeff's already to go.
Could you just help me, give me a few details about what the high-efficient equipment for transportation infrastructure would be?
I know one of the interests, as we, you know, we're looking through vehicle upgrades, right? So one option that would be, we would explore in the air, if we do something around the vehicle area, might be an electric, might be an electric vehicle, electric van, or something that can move things around. I know that's been an interest of Mr. Zeta and Mr. Dixon, of finding more efficient use of those, some of those vehicles. And so that would be one area that it could be used.
So it's, it's, I mean, it looks like a specific amount, you know, 119,800, but it.
No, those are estimates based on a couple of different areas. And then also, we have to tie it to the exact amount that we're getting, right? So some areas are, have zeros, some areas do have some specific amounts. But this is not tied to something specific that would already be planned. But those are the things that we had, that came up, and we were doing, to talk to our interest groups. It was like, we know we have an interest in getting more electrical vehicles. So that could be one area that we could, that this could, one-time funds could help with.
So the plan is to have our, our buses electrified?
Not related to this, this is a separate item, but yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Kelly, you have a question?
Dr. Mayberry, there's providing new equipment and amenities to hands TK through 12 learning, performing arts environments at the high school and middle school for 941,000. To member Perry's point on the facilities master plan, we have $4 million of potential renovations at the theater. So I'm wondering if we start with a million, and that has to be encumbered by the end of next school year. Do we need to consider that in our budgeting and approval of this plan next month? If we've kind of opened up the project, I guess, to, you know, a million dollars on, in that one facility, but we really need four? Or do we have other potential near-term funding from CTE dollars? I'm trying to kind of put that whole package together in my mind before we approve this. Thank you.
Yeah, there is potential for CTE dollars. But also, if you recall, we've only really looked at our capital improvement program. We have not looked at our facility repair replacement program. And that is going a long way to replace existing equipment. Or like, on the plan for us, will be the track and turf at the high school, when that needs to be replaced. That's a significant dollar amount, we use FERC. So we haven't identified FERC in this plan, but that would be likely the additional funding sources that we could tap into in the very near term, since it's already established.
Okay, so if we approved this tonight, knowing that a million of that 1.5 is going towards the performing arts at middle and high school, then some of that is already taken care of and dealt with out of our tenure facilities master plan?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-five percent of it.
Safe to assume that, yeah.
Right.
And to Clerk Osborne's point, we, if we spend that mil, almost million dollars, and then we have the other things coming up, we'll sequence it all, so we don't just have half of something, right?
And you don't want to split up projects into multiple smaller projects. You want to tackle the most you can one time.
So maybe when this comes back for action next month? Dr. Laura, what data was, is the facilities master plan coming back for action?
Yes.
Next meeting? Okay. So maybe we would want to make that small adjustment to the plan, knowing that this now, whatever action we take next would have an impact on the potential timing of the high school theater modifications. Sounds like if we approved this, we would start that, and then we would look for other funding, even outside of the FERC, we would be looking for other funding sources.
Yeah.
So that would affect this.
Always, yeah. The, thanks to this board, we have in-board policy now, we're supposed to look for all funding sources outside of the general fund, and prioritize those first, especially the projects.
Okay, so we could update this before the next meeting to show these, the changes that would, moving the theater forward out of the, I think, remember Perry's point was the theater is, is, is in 2020. I'm just looking, at least at the high school, theater enhancements are 2028 to 2030. But if we're starting a million dollars with, to Dr. Kelly's point, that needs to be spent by 25, 26, we're like kind of starting a big chunk of it.
Yeah.
So it seems logical that this line item on page 13 of the FMP would be updated before we approved it to show it may be moving up, assuming you could come up with the money.
Yeah, just didn't want to make any assumptions prior to the board taking action and approving the use of those funds.
Okay, gotcha.
It'll probably be broken into two projects, just because the way that we're working it, but the area of focus that we have is the lighting. So, you know, there are other pieces that will be part of the broader programming, but the intent is to use the bulk of the dollars for tonight on upgrading our lighting system so that that's up to date. So it won't be, I, I think what I'm hearing is like this idea that it's all, the project's going to go forward as one en masse. And I want to be clear that more than likely, we'll do, based off what we have available, cash on hand would be to do the lighting. And then the, any additional upgrades, we would push into, you know, where we had the money, right? So we're not going to say, oh, we're going to move that project forward, and we're going to spend $4 million, of which we only have $1 million of.
I see.
That's, that, that's where I think we'll make sure we recognize that the cost of the overall project may drop because of this, these outside dollars coming in. And then we can parcel it off into kind of be a little more specific. And that will have one part, portion being done, and then we'll have additional portions being done at a later date.
Yeah, you could just extend the schedule. You can just have a larger range too, but somehow reflecting.
Reflect that.
The, what the action the board might take.
Yep.
Momentarily, okay. Thank you.
And I think they do fit in the column of the 25, 20, 24, 25 year on the theater.
That's the CIP.
The CIP.
Yeah, I think it's, right now, on page 13, it shows theater enhancements, at least at the high school, are 2028 to 2030.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Did you see something else, though?
On the C, on the CIP page?
Yeah, on the CIP page, it has it broken up because of the recommendation is to take, you know, a million, a little over a million plus now in '24. And then you'll, if you look down the line, there's additional costs that.
Come up later in 20.
Reflected in 2029, 2030.
Yeah, I got you.
Even on the CIP, on the CIP cash flow, it shows it broken apart, which is what, we'll make sure it's really clear that.
Yeah, perfect. So thanks, President Vickers. Yeah, so we would just maybe adjust, especially since that's pretty significant.
Just to.
Funding adjusting years.
Just clarify the identification of the funds.
Yeah.
That would be good for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then I ask for motion, please. Thank you. Discussion? You have any discussion beyond your questions on this item? No? Any student comments or discussion? And student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye, opposed, carries 401. Thank you. Do you have a consent calendar next? Are there any items that, while we have public comment on consent?
No public comments.
Thank you. We have items that board members would like to pull off of consent. Then I'd like a motion, please. Consent items C through L. Thank you. Student vote?
In favor.
Board members on favor? Aye, thank you. Carries 401. We have governance action. A, appointment of two LBUSD board reps and one alternate. Okay. Okay. Appointment of two LBUSD board reps and one alternate rep to serve on the college and career advantage board. Do we have public comment on this? Do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you.
Received.
Okay, what are we doing?
I love this job.
Okay, this is one, I really love this one. Are we continuing with the current reps? Is that satisfactory?
Are you happy to serve President Vickers on this again? Okay, that's fine with me. You guys do a nice job.
It's great.
Yeah. It's just grown and grown, so it's much different than it was when it was just ROP and voc ed. Yeah, you do too. Kelly.
Yeah, be, actually, Dr. Kelly, that would be great if you can be the alternate, because my work schedule doesn't permit me to really be the alternate. You guys have been really punctual and haven't ever needed.
It's for, it's not as much as it used to be every month.
Yeah.
Except this time, we had to adjust it. Yeah, we had to adjust the, the meeting this month. They have an event. And then we have an afternoon event.
Yeah, and I also like that they, they keep us abreast, because they send us your guys' minutes, right? We get a big physical snail mail, forty or fifty pages each month, or each meeting, it sounds like. So yeah, that's fine. Victor, do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I move to appoint two board representatives, Member Dee Perry, President Jan Vickers, to serve on the college and career advantage board for the upcoming year.
Will be Jim Kelly, Dr. Kelly.
And the alternate will be Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. Is there a second to her motion? Thank you. Any discussion? No. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye, opposed, carries 401. Second item, approval of establishment of annual organizational meeting 2023. Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Is there any board comment?
Yep, just there, our annual organizational meeting will be held Thursday, December 14th, as falls within the window. So at that meeting, the board will elect a president, clerk, point, the secretary of the board. And board committee positions will be set, as well as a representation to outside organizations at that meeting.
And Ms. Weber, do we have a head count? Is everybody, at least right now, planning to be in attendance for that meeting? Okay. And then do you have a list of the outside reps, outside organizations? You've already shared with all of us, right? Okay, so everybody can see the dates that they meet and the time commitments. Yeah, okay, great. So I think fellow board members will all review that, so we can have an efficient annual organization meeting.
We're usually pretty efficient. We have fewer things now than in the past. So we have a motion to approve this. Any discussion? We'll all be there. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye, opposed, carries 401. Thank you. And then we have, well, we. Okay, we're out of order. We skipped down to 13 for governance reporting, board member reports. Do them after we adjourn.
Thanks, President Vickers. A couple of updates. President Vickers and I look forward to meeting with the city in early December to discuss the pool and where we are on that. I also attended the Lynn Lyons event on November 1st, and we heard a lot about, not just student anxiety, but how that links and kind of can be, can kind of run in families. So it was really interesting thing to hear about it in that light. I also celebrated our countywide teacher of the year dinner at Disneyland Hotel with Mr. Conlin and with our teacher of the year, Mindy Hawkins, and got to meet some of her family members, her kids and grandkids. Grandkids, it was really nice. And congratulations to all the fall sport athletes. Every time a season wraps up, I think it reminds me of how much effort you guys put in. It's not just those two months, you know, it was the whole 10 months before that lead up to that. And so congratulations to everybody, to your successes, and to really your effort that you put in. And our facilities master plan, both the presentation and the written document, I thought was very well done. It, it read well, answered most of my questions, and just really has been coming along nicely. And I look forward to our California School Boards Conference with Member Perry, Dr. Kelly, up in San Francisco at the end of November, and staff, where we learn about what's going on in the state and, you know, how to serve our community and our schools best. That's it.
Thank you. I agree. Excited to attend that conference also. I attended the endowment meeting, and I'm always so impressed with how hard they work to grow the endowment funds, but constantly evaluate and make sure that they're safe. And looking at the market updates, they're very proud of the center, the Family Resource Center, and all positive. I was able to attend with President Vickers and Dr. Mayberry, a kindergarten dance class at Elmoreau that I was so impressed with in Corsico. Those students did a lot. They, you know, were sequencing all the dance steps, they were twirling and loving it. They mostly knew their right and their left, or their, the, the wellow was the right and the left. And he just did a marvelous job, and he incorporated even social emotional. He said, at one point, he said, did you notice I was supposed to go left and I went right? And, you know, most of the kids didn't notice, but some kind of nodded their head, and he said, well, but that's okay, you can make mistakes in dance, you just dance and have fun. So it was, it was, it was great, and I was so happy to see that. Tomorrow, I'm actually volunteering at Elmoreau for their heritage days. I got my outfit ready, and I'm excited about that. That's it.
Okay, Jim.
My big activity was the PTA council, and I'm always delighted to represent the board to PTA council, and, which is the, all, all the sites. And it's just overwhelming to hear what they're doing. And our student rep did a really nice job on highlighting all the activities that were going on at each of the sites. And so I don't need to duplicate that. Membership is continuing to get close to their, their goals. So if you haven't joined the PTA, each of the four sites, please do. Otherwise, I'm just so impressed with these parents who work and do all these wonderful things for, for us and for the, for the school district.
Thank you. Thank you for representing us to that group. And I, you give a little reports to them.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I just want to comment, as our students reference, the speakers at the high school recently had that, a couple of those speakers, Chad Nelson and John Rose are graduates, they're alumni of Laguna. And I think it's great that we're incorporating that in, in our presentations. They're experts in their fields and have done some terrific work around the world with John Rose and, and his water projects. I want to say thanks for seeing the defibrillators out by the field, for access, for use out on the field, that anyone who needs them would be there evenings and weekends. And just a further expansion of what we provided throughout our campuses, but more accessible where, where the public is. As Dee mentioned, we attended the, the dance demonstration, and we, Mr., Dr. Mayberry provided us with all the curriculum and the correlation with state standards, which are really comprehensive. I mean, it would be, to, to expect teachers to cover all those is, you know, I don't know what they think when they put those together at the state level, but it's, it's beyond what could be done in, in a school year. But it still is something that we are putting a lot of effort into, as our student referenced. You know, over the years, our district has been fortunate that we've kept our priorities on some of the things, and particularly arts education, music, dance, drama, and strive to keep the funding for those programs where other districts that didn't have as much resource, those were the things they had to let go, because they had to keep the basic academics. And, and it happened also with counselors, it happened with libraries. And we've just been really fortunate here, a lot of it having to do with being community-funded, as they call it now, but basic aid, when basic aid started, that was really a boost to us. Community funded, as they call it now, but basic aid when basic aid started, that was really a boost to us. To be able to have the funding here that we could use to benefit our students. I did. I think we're very fortunate that we can bring in speakers like Lynn Lyons. I think that certainly those are pertinent issues to parents now, the anxiety issues. And I'm sure that that's our speakers like that over the years have been well received and it's we get a lot of support to do that, to bring them in. It's it's a big task. Because they are they're expensive speakers, but it's again, we're fortunate fortunate to have that support here and. To provide that opportunity for not just for parent education, but for our staff and that they do those workshops for staff during the day. It's a real to real boost. I think it gives them a lot of support. In what they see in the classroom, what they recognize going on with their students. And so I'm grateful for that. Think that's it. And. I'd like to ask for our superintendent's report. No report. Then I'd like to ask to move back up to an adjournment. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members on favor? Aye, opposed, carries four oh one. Thank you.